I will call to order the November 9th meeting of the City Council. We will, pardon me, start with the flag salute and Mr. Daniels, will you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Present.
And Mayor Zoe.
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and ATUverse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, November 13th at 9:00 a.m. and again on Wednesday, November 15th at noon on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Next item, approval of the agenda.
And Mayor, I just have one note under approval of agenda, that Agenda Item 8 relating to the Arco Gas Station Project, EIR, award of professional services contract, has been pulled or removed from this agenda, so there will be no action on that item tonight.
Okay. So move approval, less item eight?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, City of Citrus Heights 20 Year Celebration, Top 20 Presentation.
Welcome, Devin.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Devin Rodriguez, Economic Development Manager. So we have our second to last Top 20 list to present to you tonight, and in December we'll actually be doing a wrap-up. So here we are, we're going to be doing Top 20 City Landmarks tonight. And here are Top 20 landmarks based on, it's all listed in alphabetical order, but we really have a lot of great landmarks in our city, whether it's due to historical significance, or, you know, how long a landmark's been existence in the community, or things that our city or community has done to cultivate these new landmarks that we have. So there's the historical 12 Mile and 14 Mile House, also the Old Sylvan School House. Then there's some new things, like the Sunrise Marketplace Gateway Signs and the Sylvan Corners and the pylons that were developed there when the street improvement was done. So I just put a few pictures here of the 12 Mile and the 14 Mile House, the Up Up and Away Public Art that was done along Greenback, so another kind of one that has been cultivated by the city and the community in our last 20 years. San Juan High School. And there's the Sylvan Corners there. We have a good nighttime shot as well as the daytime of the pylons that are there at Sylvan Corners when we did those street improvements. We just wanted to share a few photos of the landmarks. We don't have all of them, of course, but we'll be posting the full list on our website. And I think it was just exciting to see, you know, how many landmarks we really do have in our community, because there's a lot of great, really notable ones. So next, City Council meeting, December 14th, we'll be doing a wrap-up of our 20-year celebration and the final Top 20 list, so stay tuned. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Devin. Any questions? All right. Yeah, I'm always amazed when I drive by Halls, because I, furniture, because I forget it's been, it's there. It's been there forever.
Thank you.
All right. Next item.
Next item is number five, a presentation on the annual Citrus Heights Tree Lighting, Christmas Tree Lighting Event. So I will be giving that presentation tonight, and for the audience, I'm Amy Van, the City Clerk. So tonight, we are excited to announce that the 21st Annual Tree Lighting Event will be held on Thursday, December 7th, at 6:30 p.m. here at City Hall. This is a wonderful, free event, and we invite the public to attend and enjoy this annual tradition with us. So the tree lighting ceremony will include an amazing performance by the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band, special holiday messages from our city officials, and a very special guest from the North Pole will be joining us that night. And that's not all. There will be an opportunity to take pictures with Santa, to drink some hot cocoa and some cookies, take a train ride, play some holiday-themed carnival games, and even climb into a human snow globe, and more. We'd like to especially thank our sponsors, Sunrise Marketplace, Sunrise Mall, and Republic Services. They helped make this a very successful event. So please join us on Thursday, December 7th, at 6:30 p.m. here at City Hall. And if you come early, we will be giving out our very own Citrus Heights ornament that night.
Soon to become a collector's item.
With limited supply. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Amy? All righty. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
All right, we'll start with Ms. Bruins.
Okay, thank you. Well, Regional San has not met since we last met, so there's no report there. Before I forget, I'd like to thank whoever it was who left me a cap a couple of weeks of meetings ago from Hermosa Beach, which is where I hail from. I don't know who that was, but someone knows I'm from there, and thank you whoever you are. We all celebrated the retirement of Lieutenant Jack Courtney, one of our original police officers who has retired. Sorry to see him go, but very happy for him that he is entering this new stage in life. And then last week, I had back-to-back retreats. We had the council retreat, which I won't go into a lot of comments on that. I think our mayor has some words to say on that. But just know that we do it every, every six months. We do strategic planning. And the following day, because we use the same facilitator, we had our follow-up PAL Strategic Planning Retreat, and that was very helpful to us as well. Our two major goal, well, we have three goals. One is we'd like to get a full-time police officer that is dedicated to the Police Activities League. Secondly, we'd like to find a place for our Police Activities League to operate, have a home of their own. And thirdly, we would like to get a vehicle that can transport kids, so we can get them to places when we have events for them. So those are our three main goals, and they're lofty, but they're doable. And then also, I think most, if not all of us, went to the spaghetti feed at Holy Family Church to support Heart fundraising for their Veteran Stand Down, which is coming up in a few months. And it was a great time for all. They, they actually doubled what they brought in last year, which was their first year, and I believe they cleared about $9,000, so that's really good for Heart. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Fox?
Thank you. I too attended some of the events that Councilman Bruins was talking about, but had a couple of others to add to it. Two businesses that are actively working now in our community, one is new called Nine Round Kickboxing and Fitness. We had their grand opening. They're in a shopping center across from Lowe's on Greenback. It's a young family-owned business. They're active through their business. They want to get active in the community. It's, it's a good sign of growth for small businesses for us. And the other one, although they had the grand opening scheduled, they had to put it off until the contractor finishes up some extra work on the exterior, but it's called Get Wellness Center. It's on Sunrise and Old Auburn in behind. I think it's a Safe Credit Union Bank that's located there. And they are a, they're more or less going to be a builder of that community center, I think, simply because of their presence, what they want to do. They've been there for a while. They're now reopening. They're expanding, and they're becoming very active in the community also. And they live in the community. So it's, again, it's a small business that's within our community, that's owned by our community members. The other one that I, that I was able to attend and had a great time at was Mesa Verde Business Academy. It is a business academy class. It goes year-round. It has the program for the different age students and the sophomore class. Had mock employment interviews, which I participated in with several other community folks from HUD and from other businesses and from Metro Fire. A great group of students. There were about 20 some-odd students that came through. They had four to five interviews each about a particular job that they were told that they were applying for. One was a clerk. The other was a stock person job. They had to prepare their questions. They had to do their resume. They had to do everything that you do as an adult in order to prepare to apply for a job and participate in the interview process. Kids actually, they started off, obviously, like any of us, quite frightened, concerned about how they were going to come across. By the time they got to the end of the second interview and into the third one, they were almost pros with what they wanted to do. They really felt comfortable, and they came across very well. Kudos to Mesa Verde, to the, to the instructors and to the faculty for a wonderful job they're doing with those students. And then the last one, well, I think I'll leave that one for the mayor. So that will be it for me this evening.
Thank you, Al. Mr. Daniel?
Thank you, sir. Just want to remind everybody that Saturday is Veterans Day. Please take a moment to honor those that, without them, I don't believe we would be here today. And so just don't let it go by and have it be another day. There's all kinds of events happening throughout the city and the region, but just take a moment to, to know, if you know somebody who's a veteran, to thank them for their service to our country. On the 16th, just another reminder, MAD will hold their 31st Annual Taiwan On For Safety Kickoff Event. This is MAD's longest-running and most visible campaign. It will be held at Performance Chevrolet on November 16th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's over on Madison Avenue. And yes, there'll be some food trucks there, so there'll be even better reason to go out there. Next up, on December 9th, Toys for the Troops Kids will kick off its 15th Annual Toy Drive benefiting the kids of our military troops. That is done at the shopping center at Greenback and Sunrise. And so please, it'll go on through, I think, the 22nd of December, but please take a moment to drop off a toy or two to help out our military kids. And then finally, I'm sure you have heard that in the last couple of days, the county has agreed to join the city in its effort to combat homelessness to the tune of about $100 million. I think that's great in the sense that we're going to see a very aggressive effort. My concern is that comes out to about $40,000 for every homeless person in the Sacramento County region. And, and so I'm very concerned that tax dollars are going to be spent right. But this is the biggest thing that comes to me as a council member as far as negative, a negative aspect in Citrus Heights. And so I think it's going to be up to us to make sure that we get our money's worth out of the $100 million, too, and that, you know, we have our own great program. We're doing the Navigator Program, which is having wonderful results and whatnot, but we have to make sure that we take advantage, I think, also of this $100 million in, in helping out with the homelessness in Citrus Heights. So I know a lot of you have been vocal about it. We may even have some folks here tonight that are going to speak about it. I'm not sure, but, but something is being done. It didn't happen overnight. It won't be solved overnight, but hopefully something better will come from it. And that's it.
Thank you. Brett? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Let's see. We've covered strategic planning and the Heart Spaghetti Feed, so enough said. Haven't had a regional transit meeting since we last met, but we do have one next week. And interestingly enough, it is, one of the big topics will be some surplus property that RT wants to sell and the city of Sacramento wants to buy for a triage center for the homeless. And it's so very controversial, but really, it's, I view it as the best interest for, for transit and let the city of Sacramento do their thing with transient population. So again, I hope that is successful. It's a lot of money, and it is, what, over a three-year period, so I think, but it's still, you could almost just give the money to the homeless and they could get into a home. Next week, also have Capitol Corridor, and other than that, oh, I did want to say about Veterans Day. If you haven't been out to the Sylvan Cemetery, it's a great program that they do there. And I'd suggest getting there by about 10:30. Parking's kind of tight, but it's always a good ceremony. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Steve. So as you heard, that last Wednesday, we had our strategic retreat. And one of the things we do, and we have done as a city since the beginning, is we have a retreat every six months, and we plan out what are, in other words, we come up with a plan with the staff to determine what they're going to be working on for the next six months. We do that for a couple of reasons. One, it gives them a clear idea of where we're coming from. And two, it also reminds us, as we sit up here, if we go to change anything, that we kind of have to realize, what are we going to take off their plate? Because we just can't keep adding stuff to their workload. But one of the things we did this time through was we updated our three-year goals, and I'm just going to read, there's five of them. Not surprisingly, our number, number one has always been, and it probably won't change, maintain fiscal stability, improve streets and infrastructure, diversify for a changing economy, enhance and expand public safety, and improve community vibrancy and engagement. If you go out to our website, under Strategic Plan, you will see, under those particular headings, those five headings, what the workload is specifically for those five topics, how we plan to address it. I'm not going to read those right now. Some of them have three components. Some of them have six. But that's pretty much the marching orders for what the, the city and the staff will be working on for the next six months. Interesting, Brett, you, you talked about homelessness and the $100 million. At SECAG, the Transportation Committee, we had Caltrans and the city of Bakersfield do a presentation on something that Bakersfield's been doing for a little over a year and a half now. And one of the things that they've done is they've created a program with Caltrans to put homeless people to work cleaning up along the freeways. Sounds like a great plan. And, you know, I mean, and they showed pictures, and they're doing good work, and there's 53 homeless people who are doing this on an ongoing basis. Didn't get into all the details, but it's almost $1.3 million a year to work 53 people, 53 or 56, I don't remember. But most of that's overhead when government gets involved. So again, I was kind of excited about the program. Maybe we could look at something like that up here. But once I saw the costs, like Brett said, you know, I mean, you put that per person, that is, that's just crazy. So more to come. Everybody's kind of looking at, you know, there's no silver bullet plan out there to solve it. We do know how many we have within the city. Our police department's done an analysis, you know, contacted them. And as Brett indicated, our Navigator Program's working. We doubled the amount of money we're putting into it. But certainly, we are open to any and all ideas that make sense, because I don't think any of us up here have the be-all and all answer around that. Because Saturday is Veterans Day, City Hall will be closed tomorrow, so if you have business here tomorrow, yeah, come back Monday. We, we won't be here. I'll actually be over here, so if you knock on the window, I'll wave at you, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to help you. So, so just remember, close tomorrow. With that, I think we're good. Next item, Amy.
Next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the City Clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda. And the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Amy. So I have four speaker sheets. Two of them are on the CDBG funding, which is item seven, so I'm going to hold those and call you then. The other two, under public speaking, we will start with Jennifer Spur, followed by Karen Pastor. So you each have five minutes.
Welcome.
Hi. I just wanted you guys to know that you need to set the clock back here. It says 8:20.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Again, my name is Jennifer Spur. Wanted to give you guys an update. I came a couple of weeks ago after an incident at my house, rather scary one. And I am pleased to say that CHPD has really stepped up, especially Officer Morris and Officer Garing. They both personally contacted me via phone and email to make sure that the police department was responding as they need to, to the incidents at my house. And I have had to call a couple of times, and they've been very prompt with the response. So kudos to the CHPD for reaching out and helping. I also wanted to give kudos to Councilmember Fox. He actually interviewed my daughter in one of those mock interviews, and I was telling her that I was going to come here tonight, so she wanted me to tell you hi, and thank you.
Tell her, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. I wanted to mention an incident that happened the other night. I went to go get something for my husband at the store, and I went to the Shell gas station on the corner of Antelope and Auburn, and there was a gentleman, obviously under the influence of drugs, hanging around the door. So I chose not to go to that establishment. I went down the street to the Chevron gas station on Antelope and, it's by the railies. There was another gentleman at the Chevron there that was obviously under the influence of drugs, so I didn't go to that establishment. I ended up going to another one where there was nobody there, so I felt safe to go into the store. I know that there's monies that are coming in now with what you guys just said about the homeless situation, and I wanted to not just say, hey, there's a problem. I wanted to be able to give some solutions. I talked to a lot of people on Facebook about this issue. Somebody mentioned something about a program somewhere in the east where they sell their city newspaper to the homeless for 25 cents, and they can then turn around and legally sell it for a dollar. So they get money to be able to buy food or whatever it is. And it's the cities, like the Centennial, Citrus Heights Centennial, if we did something like that, that would give them the opportunity to work with the community and work for the community to get some money in their pockets. There's also the ability to have living wages, livable wages in our city and affordable housing in our city. I think those things will be able to help our city to improve and not only our reputation, but the amount of people that want to live in our city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Jennifer, just to follow up, appreciate you recognizing the officers who were assisting you. I think when you were here before, we kind of explained it. It's a unique situation behind your house, because it's Caltrans property.
Yeah.
And it's the jurisdiction of the CHP, not CHPD. And so I think one of the things, I know the police department's been in contact with them, they were actually happy to say, okay, we'll let you patrol that area, you know. And then last Thursday, I met with somebody from Caltrans, got a name, passed it along to them, because it doesn't do any good to patrol it if they leave a mess and you don't clean it up.
Yes.
We can't clean it up because it's their property, but Caltrans has agreed that if we contact them, they will. So again, I know you're working with them, but if you see anything out there, get back to us, because the sooner we can get it cleared and cleaned up, they might not come back. Not for sure, but Caltrans has agreed to take care of the problem if we let them know.
Is there any plans to maybe solidify the area so people can't get back there as easily?
A good question, and I know they can get back there easy. Again, we have to work with Caltrans, so give us a little more time. I noticed when I drove by the fence that their fence doesn't go all the way to the other fence, or even if it did, you can go right underneath it. So even getting Caltrans to agree to what we've agreed to this, so far, we're quite happy. So give us a little more time, and we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you might consider, like, running some speakers back there, playing some opera music and stuff like that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Pastor.
Hello. My name is Karen Pastor, and my family has owned and operated Pastors Flare on the corner of Old Auburn and Sunrise since 1975, so we've been there for a little bit. Over the last five years, we have witnessed an enormous increase in the transient drug use population in Citrus Heights, excuse me. The safety of our customers and employees are our main priority, and we have implemented everything that has been recommended to us, police officers, everybody. I'm nervous, I'm sorry. We have strictly enforced a zero-tolerance policy for issues such as loitering, panhandling, and public nuisance of any kind. Unfortunately, this is a daily battle, and sometimes hourly battle, that we are dealing with. We realize that gas stations and convenience stores, especially those open 24 hours, are the number one magnet for this type of activity. But after enforcing all security measures that we have, we can only do so much. We need more assistance from our police department. We need stricter enforcement of our city laws. But more importantly, as business owners, we need help. On the other thing, on the other side of it, I'd like to personally give kudos to Officer Rick Wheaton and Officer Shannon Park. They have been really working with us one-on-one, helping us out on a daily basis if that is needed. But we are to a point that, as businesses, we go to the government, we go to the police officers, we ask for help. What do we do? We've spent thousands of dollars changing lightings and doing this and doing that, and all that we can do. It's just getting worse. I'm not saying it's homeless. I hate using that word homeless. I have a lady that comes to our establishment. She's been there for 10 years. She is homeless. It's her choice. But she doesn't break in our Pinsky. She doesn't break into our motorhomes. She doesn't defecate in the trash. She's okay. The people that we're having problems with are the people that use drugs or need the money for drugs. So we, as a business, are asking you guys, if we follow all the rules, we do everything that you ask us to do. We just need some help out here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
No, appreciate you coming. And again, I think you heard Mr. Daniels say, you know, that with the implementation of more money for rehabilitation or drug rehab and mental health, we just have to make sure that we're making sure Citrus Heights is going to get a portion of that, because that's coming from the county, and we're members of the county. I empathize with your problem. I wish I had a great answer for you.
And we understand. I mean, my husband and I, we do understand that. I don't know what the answer is. I was just talking to an officer outside the door. I don't know. But whatever it is, Pastors Valero is willing to help. We're willing to do what we need to do to work together as a community, and I think that's what it's really going to take. We have a business that we're fighting for, and I really feel sorry for the, for the homes that are getting broken into and what they're doing to the personal, I mean, that's your house. That's personal. I feel that way because it's my business, and I am there more at my business than I am at my house. But I think there's a lot of people out here that when I do something, that we just don't know what to do anymore.
Fair enough. Thank you very much for coming. So I have one more, and it's, it's, in particular, it's around item 11, which is at the end, and that's really just council member comments. So Sandy Havlock, I don't know where you are. Okay. Are you with the Safer Lock Program? Okay. So then I'll leave it, and we'll talk then. All right. I just didn't know if you represented that program or not, so. Fair enough. Those were the only ones that I had, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Next item, please.
Next item, we just have one item on the consent calendar, item number six, for council consideration.
What's the pleasure of the council on item six?
I move approval of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for General Plan Progress Report, yours 213 through 215. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number seven. This is a continued public hearing from the October 26th council meeting regarding the allocation of federal 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funds. Community Development Block Grant funds. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Application or Action Plan and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts to implement the plan.
Welcome back, Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Nicole Piva, Housing and Grants Program Technician. So I'm here to present the action plan. This is a draft action plan for our 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as our CDBG funds. Like Amy mentioned, this is a continued item from October 26. At that meeting, we reviewed the draft action plan. We heard some public comment from some representatives from nonprofits, and then we recommended continuing this item to tonight. So city staff really encourages community outreach. We do this in a variety of ways. We released an application in July, and we received applications from nonprofits that are applying for public services in August. We put those applications together in a summary to our quality of life, where recommendations were developed at that meeting. And then that brings us here to tonight. So our CDBG grant is estimated to receive about $589,000. There's a couple different pots of money that make up that funding. We have our capital money, we have our public service money, and then we have the money for administration. So there's two recommendations tonight. We like to recommend funding a citywide accessibility project. That's our capital money. And this project will fund a variety of ADA improvements throughout the city. And then we'd like to recommend using our public service money, which is $88,000. Like to recommend funding these nonprofits. And to the column on the right, this is the committee's recommendation for funding. With that, we'd like to hear a public comment on this action plan and to adopt it by resolution and to authorize our city manager to apply for funds.
Thank you. And just so you know, we, the Quality of Life Committee did actually ask on the $88,000 whether we could extend it. It's a percentage of the total money because we actually had more requests than we have for amount of money. So we actually tried to increase it considerably more, and we're told we couldn't. So we tried. So with that, it is a public hearing. And again, I do have two public speakers on this matter, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I will start with Elaine Whitefeather for Community for Peace, and then Rocky Peterson will follow. So welcome, Elaine.
Hello. Members of the council, city leadership here. I have with me Shar Martin, who's with our CEDV divert, and then of course Dave Crop, who's also our CEDV grants coordinator. You guys better get up here a little closer because you got to talk to. So we're going to talk really fast. Just quickly, wanted to thank you again, always, for investing so much in peace in our city. And I also want to thank Chief Lawrence back here for this wonderful article that he put out in your local newsletter here. And I think what I wanted to highlight before I just let them speak specifically about what you're funding. In all of my 37 or 38 years in domestic violence field, never in my life have I ever seen anything that said we decreased anything about domestic violence. And to be able to know that we did here between 2013 and 2016 here in the city of Citrus Heights, that we reduced felony domestic violence by 23%, that we reduced the occurrences of misdemeanor by 31%, that we decreased the occurrences of domestic violence protective order violations by 20%, and that we've decreased the occurrences of noncriminal domestic violence caused by 21%. That is unheard of in my movement and in my career. And I am sending it to the national movement, I'm just so that excited about it. What you're doing here for us is helping us to continue a project that began five years ago between us, CHPD, and CPS. It's the only one in the state that lasted, and it becomes now a template for our movement. So I just wanted Dave to talk a little bit about how we got these 191 families in Citrus Heights that we're following up on, and that we already started the project a couple of weeks ago. And already, as I said to Chief, we're 2-0. So let me let Dave Crop tell you about how we got those numbers, and then Shar to quickly tell you about those two success stories we already have in two weeks' time. Go.
I really try to be brief. What Elaine's referring to, and excuse me, if I could back up, I'm David Crop, and a 36-years law enforcement veteran. My last three years were spent as a reserve with the Citrus Heights Police Department, coordinating the children exposed to domestic violence grant. What Elaine is referring to is these numbers, through the third quarter of last year, the Citrus Heights Police Department responded to about 191 calls for service involving domestic violence where children were exposed, over 250 children, to be more specific. Of those 191 calls for service, the adults were responsible for over 300 prior law enforcement calls for service. They were also responsible for over 700 prior referrals to Sacramento County Child Protective Services, CPS, which means that the adults in these 191 calls for service were responsible for over 1,000 prior contacts by law enforcement and CPS. What I tell our officers is that when they respond to domestic violence where children are involved, there's an 85% chance that there are prior calls for services involving the police department and CPS. What we've been doing this year is we've been more aggressive in facilitating follow-up call service, excuse me, follow-up service and safety patrols, which means that we're prioritizing cases based on risk assessments, and we're initiating follow-up calls with our officers, Dave Morantz, for example, Shar with ACFP, and we're being more aggressive in terms of offering services through ACFP. If we have to, we'll offer restorative services through CPS. If we have to, we'll offer more corrective services through the police department and the criminal justice system. Either way, what we're starting to see this year, as the numbers for domestic violence calls for service decrease, the numbers for restraining order violation calls for services are starting to increase. We speculate that as the community begins to trust us and trust the systems, which are hard to trust, they are receiving services involving individual counseling, group counseling, legal services, daycare services, and even shelter if necessary. They're getting restraining orders, and where they're starting to hold their abusers accountable in Citrus Heights. So these are some good numbers, but they also reinforce the importance of follow-up services, which Elaine refers to as safety patrols.
And I am Shar, the Assistant Deputy Director at a Community for Peace, and I was on the safety patrol that we have already started. And in that, we visited five families, of which three have come in. Two of them have been through counseling now, and one of them has now an active restraining order. That would not happen had we not have touched them since the incident that has occurred prior.
And that's your investment, thank you so much.
Elaine, thank you for, you know, all that you've done for the movement. I mean, domestic violence is one of those things that I don't think any community likes to admit happens, but it's in every community. And through my involvement with you, I mean, it's amazing how prevalent it really was out, is, I shouldn't say was. But appreciate what you do and just keep it up.
Thank you.
And we'll keep supporting you through the CHPD and the little grants we can do here and there.
We are grateful, most definitely. Thank you so much, Oliver.
Thank you. Rocky Peterson. Sunrise Christian Food Ministry.
Good evening, my name is Rocky Peterson. Want to thank you first of all for funding us through the CDBG grant for the last two years. We've applied for next year as continuation. For some reason, the need for people needing help with food hasn't decreased. You're talking about homelessness, but homelessness is not necessarily the people that are out on the streets. It's also right within their homes and neighborhoods, and these people need a lot of help with their food. We've, just this year, are servicing over 8,000 people from just Citrus Heights with food. We give emergency food that's on a monthly basis. We happen to be one of the top 10, or top 10, the busiest food closets here in Sacramento County. And it's through your help to be able to keep servicing us that we're able to do this. My mind went blank. Your help is necessary. We're strictly a voluntary organization. All of the monies that we receive are, go in strictly for food purchasing and operation expenses. So we just want to thank you, and you're welcome to come and visit anytime to see what our community does to help these people. Thank you.
Couple of questions before you go.
Hi, Rocky, thanks for coming tonight. I know that you do some vetting of the people that come and request food. Can you just explain to me how you qualify them and how often they can come and get food?
People can come in once every 30 days. It's not a monthly basis because they can't come in at the end of a month and then the beginning of the next month. It's every 30 days, and we keep track of that through our database. The other, we have a income level that's through the federal government that they self-certify that they are below that level.
So when you say 8,000 people from just within Citrus Heights?
Yes.
Is that 8,000 distinct people or 8,000 occurrences?
Distinct, but at least once through the year that they've come in. Many of them have come in 11 months now.
Okay.
But that's distinct people.
But they don't come in necessarily every month, but they show up at least once through the 12-month period?
That's correct.
I'm amazed at that because that's nearly 10% of our population.
Yes, it is.
Very, very surprised.
And we, through our reporting for CDBG, we turn in those numbers, and they're all verifiable that they're out there with Citrus Heights addresses.
Thank you for all that you do.
It's terrible.
So one follow-up question for you, Rocky. You said you're a volunteer organization. So if people want to help on their own, is it preferably from your end that funds are donated so you can purchase the right goods to give out, or do you accept food items?
Both.
So give yourself a plug and tell people how they can donate to you and where you are.
For donations, we're there Monday through Friday from 8 o'clock till 3 o'clock and drop it off. We're open for service from 11:30 till 3:00. But they can bring food. We gladly receive any amount of food, this time of the year especially. We've been servicing this last two weeks over 70 families every day.
And your address, so people know?
We're on San Juan Avenue, just up the street here. It's behind the Advent Lutheran Church. We use a facility there at their church.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, is it public hearing? Anybody else want to speak? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments by the council? If not, what's the pleasure?
I move that we approve staff recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item, Amy.
Next item is regular calendar, item nine. The subject is amendment to residential garbage and recycling service agreement with Republic Services and an agreement with Sacramento County for Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the Residential Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Services Contract and approving an agreement with the county of Sacramento.
So Mary, if you aren't here talking about cats, you're talking about garbage.
Cats are, animals are trash. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Mary Poole with the General Services Department, and I'm here tonight to walk through our recommendations for a transition from drop-off events at Sunrise Mall for household hazardous waste collection to residential use of the drop-off facility at the North Area Recovery Station and also the other county facility on Kiefer. So what I'm going to talk about tonight includes the recommendation, why we're recommending it, what is household hazardous waste, just briefly, just to remind folks, the background of what we used to do and why we changed, proposed solution, the cure for our problem, what the amendment looks like that we're recommending, next steps, and then again, the recommendation. So the recommendation before each night is to approve a resolution that approves an amendment with Republic Services that effectively removes their requirement to provide the household hazardous waste drop-off events three times per year, and at the same time, approve an agreement with the county of Sacramento to allow for the provision of HHW residential collection program through their facilities, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements. Neither agreement effective unless both are effective. So our goal is to provide low-cost, convenient, and accessible options for residents to safely dispose of household hazardous waste. Household hazardous waste is expensive and difficult to manage, and it costs, like I said, it was expensive, it costs a lot of money. A lot of people don't really realize the breadth of what household hazardous waste includes. But as you can see from these pictures on the bottom, I think a lot of us have these materials in our garages, our sheds, and maybe don't even realize that they are in fact hazardous, and that if we put them in the trash, it causes a lot of problems. So household hazardous waste includes household and landscape chemicals, paints and solvents, pesticides, herbicides, acids, oxidizers, even fingernail polish remover. It includes lights, batteries, and electronics. This is typically called universal waste, but it still has to be handled carefully and with a lot of regulation all around it. Fluorescent lights and tubes, batteries, computer electronic devices, even microwaves, and all mercury-containing items. Why is it important that we prevent this household hazardous waste from getting into our garbage and also down the drain or in our creeks? If household hazardous waste is anywhere near any of the processing facilities where people are working, it could seriously injure them, not just by handling it, but also by the reaction from explosions or combinations of things that should not be combined. Polluting the environment, of course, drinking water, wastewater treatment system, septic system, stormwater, contaminated groundwater, and, you know, especially these days, we really think about the contamination of our homes, yards, and neighborhood in the event of disasters like fires and floods. All those materials gets into the water that people are slogging through trying to save their animals, their lives, their homes. So that's definitely a driving motivation. And of course, coming into contact with pets, children, wildlife, and really anyone. So the background on this is that prior to 2011, we did contract with Sacramento County to provide access for residents, and our residents could go to NARS and they could drop off their hazardous waste. We had some concerns about that. The data wasn't accurate, it appeared that there could be a lot of commercial customer abuse. If they go in there, they're just saying that they're a resident, but they have a lot of material. And if they're going in as a resident, they're not paying. As they go in as a commercial, then they pay as a business customer. And the rising cost of service with an inability to control it. So when we had the amended agreement with Republic Services, we added the drop-off events. We said we're not going to use NARS anymore, we're going to do these drop-off events. And as part of that structure of the agreement, the city would contribute the first $75,000 to help fund those events. And Republic is responsible for anything over that. And that's how we've been operating since 2011. So while these events were successful and have been successful, and people do like them, the residents who aren't able to utilize them have very limited options for disposal. We have to craft some adventure for them to try and dispose of paint here, batteries here, light bulbs here, you know, different places that do take back materials. And if they wanted to, if they had other materials beyond that, they'd have to take them down to the Sacramento City Transfer Station, and they'd have to pay for them. So for those folks, it really hasn't been a success. So we have remained open to opportunities to partner with the county or even another local agency if we could resolve the concerns. So now we have. We have a proposed new agreement with Sacramento County for their use of their facilities at NARS, which is, well, I'll show it to you on the map in a moment. And they have a new, it's new to us, but they've had it going on for a couple of years. It's called the SAC HAS Tracker, and it's a custom materials and customer tracking system that they developed. And actually, other facilities are using the same system now. But this allows us, them, to track the customers by ID, materials by customer, assigns the materials to the appropriate jurisdiction, and it has several layers of detection for commercial customers. and it has some, several layers of detection for commercial customers. So ultimately, the county program has about a fifty percent lower cost for the administrative fee that they had before. And the residential loads are running around fifty-five dollars a head when you factor in the admin. So this is where, for those of you who don't know where NARS is, it is located just across Wad Avenue on Roseville Road. So it's pretty easy for most of our residents to get to and very familiar because the dump is there also. The North Area Recovery Station, this is a little snip from their brochure and so it just goes through what's acceptable and what isn't. And also, you might see the asterisk right here where Citrus Heights has a three residential drop-off event, so they can't use the facility note. So just to do a comparison, when we look at the two options, we see that the North Area Recovery option really gets us a lot more benefits than we have now. Residents can take unused medications there. They can take their home-generated sharps there, even though they can also call for an appointment. This allows customers who are living in multifamily also to take advantage of this. So those folks also were turned away and we had to run them through our drop-off events and keep them separate. So this makes it very simple. And NARS is open year-round except for New Year's, Christmas, and Thanksgiving. The cost for the drop-off events keeps getting higher and NARS seems to have things under control. The tracking options, the discouragement of commercial customers, and then again, as I already mentioned, the multifamily customer accessibility. So that's why we want to move to this agreement. Now, what the amendment will do is remove the current requirement for Republic to provide the three drop-off events, shift the contribution that the city is making to Republic to make the seventy-five thousand dollars will go toward the agreement with Sacramento County. But it still remains seventy-five thousand dollars capped. So anything over that still remains the responsibility of Republic Services to cover that cost. In addition, Republic Services is still required to provide outreach and education. And the final piece is that if Republic realizes any savings from this, that those savings will be reinvested into the community. And typically, that would look like the form of illegal dumping, assistance with illegal dumping, or some cameras or some other things that are benefiting our residents. If you approve the recommendation, then the agreement with Sacramento County would be effective in January two. Second, because of course it will be closed on New Year's Day. We would go out with a robust outreach campaign, work with the county to update their publications and their little blurbs that say Citrus Heights residents can't come to their facilities. And then we'd work with Republic to anticipate what kind of savings they might realize and what we would do with that, should that happen. So back to the staff recommendation. Staff is recommending that you approve the amendment with Republic Services and also approve the agreement with Sacramento County. Again, remembering that neither are effective until both are effective.
Thank you very much, Mary. Any questions from staff? Jeanne?
I've got a couple of questions. How do we get into the discussion with this again? Who initiated it?
This has been something that staff and Republic has been interested in. So we've been talking about it for years and it just, we haven't had the right.
So we approached the county?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And I have to say too, that the county has been approaching us. It's been in the interest of the county to have, it's been inconvenient for the county to have our residents show up and not be able to drop off their materials there. They also support, you know, we're the only agency in the region that doesn't use the facility.
Okay. I guess when I first read the staff report, my first question was, how is it more convenient for our residents to drive all the way up to Roseville Road than to drive to the mall three times a year, knowing that the pickups and, you know, are happening? And, you know, the people that, you know, the comment was made, or it was in the staff report, that it's inconvenient. Some can't get there. They can't get to the mall. They're not going to be able to get down to the NARS station. So I'm questioning whether it's really all that much more convenient for our residents, if that's a real reason to do this.
The inconvenience is when they cannot get there. And that's what, as customer service staff, the calls that we're getting, we're not able, you know, residents are not able to make those events. And so the inconvenience is that they can't get there those three times and that they are not able to get rid of the material. Or they might have material that they need to get rid of immediately and there is no event. And that happens when people, a lot of times when people are moving out of a house, of a rental situation.
I can see that, yeah. I just, in my brain, didn't equate how it was easier to drive all the way down to Roseville Road than it was to drive to the mall. But from what you're telling me, it's because it's more readily accessible on an ongoing basis.
Correct. Yeah, the inconvenience is completely related to the accessibility when needed.
Okay, then, then we do have, I mean, we do have an answer for sharps. You know, you said there's no sharps drop-off there, but we do have a program for sharps.
We do for our residential customers of Republic. We do not for our multifamily customers. So our multifamily customers are not able to take the materials.
Okay.
They don't, they can't make appointments. So that's half of our city.
Okay. Okay. And then my, and my next question is, why is Republic still responsible for expenses in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars if they're not participating in the program?
So Republic is currently responsible for expenses over seventy-five thousand for the city's household hazardous waste program.
Right. I know that, but they're, that's because they're participating in the program.
They were providing the service. So you could look at this, that they could theoretically be contracting with Sacramento County to provide our residents access to the service. But since they're not, we're acting as that contracting agent, but they're still responsible for any costs over that.
All right. Say that again because.
So they contract with, say, Stericycle to provide the service at Sunrise Mall. If we shift what the program looks like and we're now going to a facility somewhere, they're still responsible for that cost.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, and I think part of the issue is we don't necessarily know how often people are going to go there, right? It's fifty-five dollars a drop-off, but maybe I'm a collector and I go there ten times a year. Maybe you go once.
Right.
I think at the end of the day, what this is saying is today, the city's limited to a seventy-five thousand dollar liability. Republic picks up the difference. If our visitation trips by our citizens exceed seventy-five thousand dollars, Republic pays it, not us.
I get that. I understand that. I just don't understand why Republic is having to pay it, not the county, or why are they still on the hook for something they're not participating in?
So just going back to our contract that was part of the amendment in 2011, the agreement was that Republic would provide the household hazardous waste drop-off events. And they agreed to pay anything over seventy-five thousand dollars. And they have been. They've been providing that through their third-party vendor.
So with my understanding that they're, they're willing to continue to pay whatever comes in over seventy-five thousand dollars to not have, to not, to have to hold the events?
Correct.
Okay. And then earlier, I believe, I heard you say the administrative cost is fifty percent less from the county than what it had been in the past?
Correct.
Okay. So how does that equate to the seventy-five thousand dollar cost to the city?
So the administrative, and if you drive through and drop off your materials at NARS, the city is going to incur a fifteen-dollar charge as an admin fee, what I think it's fifteen.
Yep.
Fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. And then we'll also be charged whatever the materials are. So the, the cost of the seventy-five thousand dollars is what we will pay. The city will pay the county. And then the city will pay the county anything over that, but Republic will have to reimburse us.
Or conversely, less.
Correct. And in anticipation of that, conversely less, we developed the investment.
I'd like, okay, I'd like us to track, you know, this, presuming that this passes, track the response that we get from the public over the next year.
Okay.
And see what kind of, you know, what kind of feedback we get. And how long is our contract with the county going to be?
The contract with the county is, I believe, it's three years. I have to check.
And I would say when we first moved to private versus the county, we actually got a lot of feedback from people who were upset that they couldn't go there anymore.
We've continued to get that feedback.
And the difference is three hundred and sixty-two days a year they can go versus.
Yeah, I get it. So I would just still like to track feedback that we get because I'm sure there are people that would like to see it left at the mall, too.
Agreed. Definitely.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Please, Brett.
So currently, the, our residents are not charged to go to the event at the mall, right?
No.
Three drop-offs. And they won't be charged any of the fifty-five dollars if they go to the transfer station?
Correct. It's included in their rate.
So the fifty-five dollars, is that a hard cost or did I just hear you say a minute ago?
No, it's an average. It's an average when we look at the different jurisdictions who have been using NARS lately. I said, "We looked at Rancho, we looked at Elk Grove, we look at county resident, what's the average cost?" It's running around fifty-five dollars.
And so at fifty-five dollars into seventy-five thousand dollars, I get about one thousand three hundred and sixty-three drop-offs. That sounds really low. Any idea how many drop-offs we've had when we do the three events at the mall?
Yes. So our events have been, our last event, we had a really successful event in October, which was six hundred and ninety-nine cars. Prior to that, they were running about five hundred vehicles per event. And that's with door hangers, you know, we're, we're really heavily advertising these events and yet the participation is going down. Those events are costing between eighty and a hundred and twenty dollars a car. So again, when the, you know, when we're looking at, there is a benefit to Republic Services to shift over to NARS and there's a benefit to our residents. And there's a benefit to us. So we're all winning in this scenario.
I definitely see a benefit of being able to go out there hundreds of times a year. I definitely see a benefit of being able to drive up to the mall. Was there any discussion or thought of making kind of a hybrid where we have a contract with, you know, going out to the transfer station, but maybe once a year, we do a drop-off at the mall for the folks that just.
I think we could look at that if we, you know, go forward and we see that there's a huge tide of people who are.
I'm sure there's elderly folks that they're okay with driving to the mall, but they're not going to drive down to the North Area Station, so.
I had an elderly gentleman at the Mobile Home Park off of Daley who wanted to go to NARS and bring his material there and he, and he had to wait for the event. So, I mean, folks kind of like also to go to the place where they know it's going to be open and they can go when they want to go. And so there's definitely different opinions, so.
And is there any discussion going back to the Solid Waste Authority? Any of that going on in your discussion? No?
Any additional questions for staff?
No.
What's the pleasure of the council? I'll move the item.
And I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, stained, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is department report number ten. The subject is one-year update on the zoning code amendments relating to hen keeping.
Hens, all right. How are chickens and hens doing in this state?
Chickens are doing great. I just want to give you an update. I'm Allison with the City Planning Division. And it's been a year now since you've adopted the zoning code update to allow hens on small lots. Previously, as you recall, hens could be kept in your yard, but you had to have ten thousand square feet. And with the urban movement, people were wanting those hens in their yard. So a year ago, you did adopt the zoning code amendment that allowed them and our complaints have actually went down. Code enforcement's been very pleased, has not been inundated with phone calls, so I think we got it right. So I just want to give you that update.
And no hens have complained?
No hens. Fluffy's very happy, if you remember Fluffy.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember Fluffy coming in.
Fluffy came to a council meeting.
Yep. And he's very happy.
Yeah, good. Glad to hear this. It's been successful.
Thank you. Appreciate you following up on that because I haven't heard anything, so that, I mean, that's good from our end.
Very good. Very good.
Great. Next item, Amy.
Next item, city manager items, and there are none. Next is items requested by council members. Number eleven, council discussion regarding prescription drug pill bottle locking devices.
Okay, Brett, this was an item you brought up a couple of meetings ago to put on the calendar to basically discuss, discuss. Go for it.
So as we talked about before and as I mentioned before, I think this is a very important thing that the city should look at. We're a big-time bedroom community. We've got ninety thousand people almost, and obviously, that means we've got a lot of kids. And I think that as a city, as an entity, as a public safety issue, I think we can look at the issue of either abused or accidental drug overdose-type scenarios as things that do create a ongoing impact on us as a city. I think that it's very logical to think, and if we think about our homeless population, that a lot of it is involving drug abuse. It is a very well-established fact that a lot of drug abuse that occurs in adulthood begins in the teen years at home. And that's getting into mom and dad's drugs and things like that. There's a lot of factors I think that we should, we could consider, but I think, I think bottom line is that I would like this council or the city also, I should say, the city, to check into ways of partnering with some folks. I've had some discussions with Sue Frost and she is committed to funding in this effort. I'm not sure to what level yet, but I would hope that she could maybe find a way to put in some money. We could find a way to put in some money. We could maybe reach out to other organizations such as Mercy Hospitals, since the medical center's going in just up the street, the Rotary, Stones, whatever, you know, our typical partners. And I think that they would see a value in this type of thing, again, as a city. I think that, you know, we can look at some things in history, you know, in nineteen seventy, society came along and demanded something and we came up with the child-resistant top to our prescription bottles. And, you know, infuriates a lot of us adults as we try to get those things off. But, but the reality of it is, a study was done that showed that, that, that little invention, you know, almost fifty years ago, has resulted in a forty-five percent reduction in mortality of kids getting into parents' drugs. And so now, fast forward again to 2017, and now it's more of a problem, I think, with our youngsters, our teenagers and stuff like that. And so is this something that maybe will cause a trend, contribute towards a trend in responding to such a problem? I think it will, actually. I see this as a very, very viable solution or one of the solutions to combating that problem. And the nice thing about this device, again, this will not prevent Johnny from taking the pill bottle and crushing it and, you know, taking those pills. That's not what Johnny's going to do. Johnny's going to first open it and take one or two and go to, you know, friends and share and stuff like that. And so hopefully, this will keep that from occurring in that first step that then we see a lot of times in society goes to step two, three, four, and five. And then you go from a good kid to a heroin addict in no time at all. So that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking at support from the council to just, again, look into this idea, move forward with it if we like it as a council, if we think it's something important for our residents. And again, with the thought that it goes beyond just the home and it hopefully would have a effect on reducing some of these things that we see, such as homelessness.
Okay. So I have a couple of comments. I remember seeing the bottle. Don't know what happened to it.
Johnny took it.
Johnny took it.
He's working on the combination.
So.
Ten thousand options.
So I have no problem with the idea, but, you know, to me, there's a couple of things. There's competing priorities. I mean, you've seen, on social media, you've seen people here tonight talking about homelessness. To me, it comes down to two things at the end of the day. One, funding, and two, what do you do with it when you get it? So I know from Sue that she's committed, and I think these things run about five, six dollars a bottle. She's committed six thousand dollars, which is about a thousand of them, if we want to pursue it. So the financing end, that's good because quite frankly, the city doesn't have the money. We'd have to figure out where to come from. Second of all, my bigger concern is, okay, we get them. What do you do? I don't want to create a program where city staff has to come up with eligibility, you know, how do you do this? I mean, if we're talking about putting some over at the police department, people come to the window and want to grab them, that's fine. If we put some in police cars where they can hand them out. But I don't want a process where city staff has to investigate and come up with, you know, what do we do with these things? It's like, we'll let people know. You can get them at the front counter, you can get them at the police station. But that's my bigger thing, you know, we just did our retreat. And again, not that it's not an important item, but, you know, it seems like we've got some work to do on homelessness. City staff has already. homelessness, city staff is already tasked with, you know, 17 or 18 things we gave them last week. I just want to make sure, since it appears, again, that the funding can be arranged, that it's not a burden on staff outside of, you know, we let people know in the meetings they're available, you can get them at the front counter, you can get them at the community center, you can get them across the street, and then we kind of see what happens to them. If six months from now, we still have 500 of them, eh, you know? So, I mean, is that...
No, I like what you said, I don't want to complicate it. And I think it's, we make them available, we, people can come and either get them, or, again, we find ways to reach out to the community and events, whatever. But we don't need to complicate it, we don't need to, you know, do a piece of paper on it at all.
Okay.
We need to have a person come up and say, I live in Citrus Heights, I take medication, I'd like one of the...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we can let the service organizations know, I'm sure they can get the word out as well, so...
Yep. And again, I think that when we, I'll maybe ginger here, when we say we don't have money for it, we do have money for it, we just make decisions on where we want to spend our money.
Correct.
But, and I'm not talking about, you know, five figures, six figures, seven zip figures, you know, I'm talking, at this point, we're talking maybe four figures. And so, I hope this would be a start, and again, I like what you said regarding, is it a success? Because we don't want, you know, 700 of these things sitting over in the back of the police station or something like that, collecting dust. So, you know, if we find success...
I'm more than happy to use the county's money to find out if it's a success or not.
So Brett, how long has this taken, how long have these been around?
Your Honor.
We do have the representative for the company here, who might be able to better address it.
So Sandy, do you want to come up front? And again, typically, we don't have public speakers here, but we'll give you a couple minutes to maybe answer the question, and you, you don't have one with you, do you, by chance? Are you just having to carry them around, Greg? Oh, it's even full. Do I get, like, extra points if I get it opened?
Do you want to read it, or is it free?
Well, I didn't say how I'd get it open, I just...
Or...
Or know the combo?
Right.
Okay. Five, seven, two, see?
So, thank you. My name is Sandy Hancock, and I'll let you know, I grew up in Citrus Heights, I went to San Juan High School, bought my first house here, and my husband and I opened our first business in Citrus Heights, so...
Good for you.
It's been, it's been a few months, but I'm happy to be here. So I do represent SaferLock, and we work in practical methodology to prevent children from accessing opioids. It is systemic in this country, you don't have to look far, there's no corner of this country that's safe from this, it's everywhere. 70% of all drugs that are abused are found inside the home, and only 3% are locked up. Every single day, 3,000 new children will experiment with a prescription drug that has not been prescribed to them for the purpose of getting high. It's, that's up, by the way, from last year, by 500 kids a day. So it is a big problem, and we're all about education, but unless somebody steps up with something, and it doesn't necessarily have to be us, we just happen to have a product that does this. The problem with children being accidentally poisoned, and we certainly have a big issue coming up on January 1st with the adult use of marijuana and edibles, we, we believe that the next generation is not safe from the same abuse and misuse issue of opioids. So we brought about SaferLock, it came about from our own family devastation. One of our own was in a horrible accident on the strip in Las Vegas, she was hit by a semi-truck when she was stopped in her car. Semi-truck hit her doing 45 miles an hour, and it pushed the entire car plus her through the windshield. She had 45 surgeries, she's still alive by the grace, but unbeknownst to her, her 14-year-old son, going to Lincoln High School, star athlete on the tennis team, straight-A student, was stealing one pill at a time. People don't think it can happen, it's happening everywhere, it is happening everywhere. So we wanted to come up with a solution. This was invented by a 19-year-old child, her other son, there was nothing else out there that prevented the unauthorized access of the medication.
Okay. So it's both the top and the bottom, I mean, it's the whole...
It is, it's the top and the bottom.
Okay. So it sounds like, from our end, we have a funding source that...
Right.
Brett, I'll let you work on that, to order some of these.
Right.
And then we can talk again as a group, anybody, I mean, it doesn't cost us anything, so I think...
Yeah.
Okay. And then you gave us this material for educational purposes, all right.
I did, yeah. It's a white paper, and it's, it contains a tremendous amount of data. So this is your company that makes these? No, no, I'm just one of the vice presidents for the company, I work for the company that actually invented the product. Okay, and so how long has this product been around? Since 2012. Okay. And do you have it in any other cities that are funding it? We, we do. The state of Illinois passed legislation that incents pharmacies to provide the SaferLock cap with a scheduled drug. So any potentially... Okay. So the pharmacies provide that with the drug? Right. And Cook County as part of that, which was not driven by legislation, they had no requirements. Their county hospitals started out offering this product with what's called hydrocodone, which is a pain medication, and within a month, decided that they would distribute all scheduled drugs in a SaferLock bottle. The hospital pharmacy? Right, the hospital's pharmacy. So if you're a constituent of that particular city and you go to one of those hospitals, the hospitals pay to have a SaferLock cap on the bottle. It fits most prescription bottles, by the way. You know, and that seems very appropriate to me, to have the medical community pay for it, rather than the local city government. Well, we're... I'm willing to, I'm willing to, since Sue's willing to fund it, I'm willing to participate in it. But I honestly think that this should be something that the medical community should embrace, rather than the local government. You would, you would think, you would think that, but the pharmaceutical industry, which has extraordinarily deep pockets... Right. And lobbyists that are keeping, there's a big distance between the, something happening now and something for, they're being forced to make something to happen. And it, it won't change, it's going to be five years. They're doing all kinds of things to make those kind of changes, but the medical industry is slow to adopt, and they usually adopt based on they're being forced to adopt. And so we are looking for cities, we just actually were endorsed by California Narcotic Officers Association, one of only two products in their 53-year existence. So, and the city of Rancho Cordova purchased 1,000 of these to distribute through their police force. So they used it for, in the officers' cars, as well as for drug take-back days, so exchanging it for drug take-back days. So there are cities who are looking at it, yes. Thank you.
And I'd like to see it as really a public awareness, where, you know, we're not going to provide them to every citizen or anybody that buys...
1,000 of them.
No. And so that's really what I'm interested in, is the scope of how we do it, whether it's a drug take-back in exchange, you know, the first 100, the first 1,000, whatever, there's some incentive to bring...
Right.
...prescription drugs back, and raise the awareness. We're certainly not going to be a retailer for these...
No, and, but I did hear some interesting facts about the city. You know, 10% of your population is, is, you know, relying on assistance for food, that's 10% of your population that won't be able to afford to go buy this in a retail outlet.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so we'll agree to agree to move it forward, put it down there, you work out getting them, and then when you get them, we'll put them around three places, put them in some cars, and then we'll kind of see what happens.
Yeah, great, fantastic.
Fair enough.
Thank you so much.
And here's your...
Thank you.
I don't want to be accused of...
Is that my aspirin?
Yeah, I don't know the combo anyways, so...
We think it's aspirin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Any other items from council members? All right, I hope to see most of you Saturday.
Yep.
Not raining, hopefully. Anything else over there, Amy? You guys all good? All right, so with that, go ahead and end the meeting. Thank you all.